I'd like to call our Thursday, February 8th, 2018 Forest Lake Area School Board Meeting to Order. Member Clerk, could you please take your roll call?
Member Corcoran, here. Member Morehead, here. Member Peterson?
Present.
Member Odegaard?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Present.
Member Rayco?
Present.
Member Olson, here.
All right. Are there any items people would like pulled from the consent agenda?
I'd like to call 3.3, please.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve 3-1 to 3-2? So move. With second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. 3-3, William Tyson?
Yes, so I'd like to recognize the retirements of Suzanne McCardle and John Buck. Thirty-two years each. I know my daughters both had Suzanne McCardle on at Scandi Elementary. Rob and I were just talking about how that was a long time ago. Wow, but what a gift she has been to our school district at the Scandi Elementary. I remember when I was doing title in my classroom, she told me one of her favorite things was to correct all of her papers. Because she wrote such endearing things on them and got their humor. And I just saw her last month at the district wellness meeting. So she's still just giving her gifts. I'm looking out for that Scandi Elementary kids in our district. So with that, I move to approve.
All right. So second?
I've seen that back in general.
Yeah.
Oh. I've known John quite a few years. He's coached my son Dylan in basketball. And he's just an amazing man and teacher. And we greatly missed him even while he also worked on the Christian Athletes in the morning, in the Wednesday morning for the high school, which just was a great organization and really meant a lot to my son. And he's just been a phenomenal mentor and just a really great guy. He's made current people out in the school and also football. Also a football coach. So yeah, no more on that. He's just a really great guy. So congratulations on his retirement also.
And I am too because I've known him for a long time. He's just the kind of teacher that you want with your people to build them up in all sorts of ways for them. And I know the principal, Paul Wilson, said that you can replace everybody, but you cannot replace what they are in everything. So he is certainly geared to this.
So do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you. Four, old business. Four-one, Morris Love and Survey Results.
All right. So thank you. And as I get ready to introduce Peter and we hit the projection, there's three parts to our post-election review process. We have six conversations scheduled. We've had two of them. One in Lynnwood and one at Columbus. We're very pleased with the turnout and the dialogue that's occurring with those. We'll have four more over the next several weeks. We also have a school planning task force with three days scheduled in March. And we're in the works of putting that team together and the conversation of the company. The third part of that is a post-election survey that Morris Love and Company conducted for us. We have Peter Love here from the company to walk us through the results of that survey. So thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Super. It's a, well, it's not a pleasure being with you this evening to go through these results. It'd be much better to have a successful referendum that we're going to be looking at. But this is the state that we're in. And so with the methodology to explain what we undertook, we did three random samples of 250 each. One random sample is of parents who voted in the election. Another random sample are non-parents who voted in the election. And then we did another sample of parents who didn't vote. So the one portion of the community not in this survey are non-parents who didn't vote to understand their reasons for not voting. It didn't seem relevant for moving forward for planning. Now, the interviews were conducted after the New Year. We have to wait for the Secretary of State's list and it takes them a while in order to compile that. So we are two months past the election. Recall is always a little sketchy at this point and we're going to see that you not only have recall two months later, you've got what's called a halo effect. And now that you're talking about budget cuts, you have buyer's remorse also coming into play. The average interview time was 14 minutes. Once we found them at home, it was, the non-response rate is 5%. And keep in mind that the results of each of the three sets of data that I'm going to show you is plus or minus 6.3 because we did 250 samples. Now, first off, let's look at some demographics. And I put the parent demographics of voters and non-voters together because it shows a trend that we've been seeing now over the last five years has occurred here in Forest Lake also. It's not surprising, but it is very pronounced here. The green bar are parents who voted. The red bar are parents who did not vote. And we go right to the age group of millennials. Thirty-two percent of millennial parents of your parents were voters. Amongst non-voters, it was 44% of millennials did not vote. So millennials are very underrepresented and we see this time and time again now. A whole bunch of factors go into this. A generational thing with institutions and with it being a priority. We're going to look at specific reasons why they didn't vote and they follow a similar pattern in that it's not a priority for them, even if they are stakeholders. It's very, it doesn't make sense to me. I'm a parent, but I'm not a millennial. But this trend holds. So millennials, almost half of non-parent, of non-parents or parents who didn't vote were millennials. Thus, we go to preschool households. Preschool households were underrepresented amongst voters. Forty-four percent of non-voting parents contain households. Renters, the split is, if they were renters, less stability in the district and lower property values. They tended not to vote. If they were voters and parents, they had higher property values. On the split, it actually kind of switches. Women were much more likely to vote. It's not a surprise here. It happens in election after election. Similarly though, with non-voting parents. You're going to see though, when we look at the demographics of non-parents, men were overwhelmingly more likely to vote. And then if we just look at the geographical distribution, Forest Lake amongst voters where parents was higher. Other Washington County area locations tended to have parents who didn't vote. But the key takeaway on the demographics, and we see it again and again, is the propensity for younger parents, those with children in elementary school and preschool, not to be voting. Now, there's a lot of data, and I always tell people, please interrupt me. I don't want to get to slide 50 and then go back because you have a question on three. So if you have a question, feel free to ask.
Peter, what can you tell us about overall voter turnout?
Well, it looked like with the numbers you gave me, 41% of the makeup of the electorate were parents this time. Okay.
I believe your interpretation of that information is of our parents, 41% voted.
Now, non-parent voters skewed very bold, very ill. In fact, I broke out the 55 to 64 to 65-plus category. Basically, you had a third of non-parent voters in those categories. Only 13% of these folks had preschoolers in the household. So they were, they did not have children yet. They were new families in the younger age categories. You can see the home value skewed much higher than the parent group. And this is the gender difference here. Men, 60% of non-parent voters were men as opposed to 40% women.
60% of non-parent voters, they were not parents?
They weren't parents.
60% of non-parent voters were men.
Forty percent were men. And a majority of non-parent voters came out of the city of Forest Lake, 51%. All right. That's the demographics of these three groups. Now, the next questions are going to be asked of parents who didn't vote. That sample of 250. So what are their reasons for not voting? This is the concern when you think that these are stakeholders in the district. What leaves the list is no time, they were busy, 28%.
How long was early voting, voting? Once, on?
Forty-two days or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, on time.
And we're going to see the push that worked here, like we've seen it work in other districts. You had a quarter of, well, 23% flat out say they weren't interested, which is very much a concern. Now, you had 14% that go into the buyer's regret that I thought it would pass, so it wasn't going to take the time. 14% indicated they didn't have enough information. And then 11% flat forgot. So if I'm going to clump this and say it just wasn't a priority on Election Day, I'd include no time busy, not interested, and forgot. So almost, well, 62%, almost two-thirds of parents who didn't vote basically fell in the category that they didn't see that it's a big enough priority in order to vote that day. Now, this trend is, you're not unique in this trend. But what is unique is that demographic page earlier, that wide gap between millennial parents who voted and who didn't vote.
You're assuming that if they would have voted, they would have voted for it? Or are we assuming because it wasn't a need, that they probably would have voted already?
We'll get to it. Yeah. Yeah. Now, that was an open-ended question. So they could tell us whatever they wanted. Now, we gave them some specific reasons and asked if they were a major factor, minor factor, not a factor at all. What leaves the list is the statement, "It was a busy day for me and I forgot an election was occurring." Forty-five percent indicated it was a major factor. An additional 21% said it was a minor factor. I did not have enough information to make a decision about the proposal. Thirty percent major, 60% total impact. They paid little attention to local issues. This is kind of the disengaged group of parents that has 58% total impact. They thought it would pass. Twenty-four percent of them said it was a major factor. The not a high priority is really a unique question here because it seemed to split both ways if we look at the age demographic. Because these are parents. And so the question reads, "At this point in life, public schools are not a high priority for me." Which is very counterintuitive if you're parents. You have older parents of kids in high school that are just about ready to check out. And we see this, we always call it, they become what we call the bad boomers. The kids are done. They're not going to support referendum anymore. It's time for the next group of parents. But on the flip side, you did have a lot of millennials in this group. And if we look at some of the comments in here, the priority and the focus, especially with the bond referendum, they didn't see that impacting their kids. If my kids are in preschool, if they're in second grade at this point in time, it just wasn't a high enough priority. 12% of those major factors said they thought it would fail. And only 4% said it was a major factor that they had no idea were to vote. Okay? But the predominant takeaway is it wasn't a priority for them on Election Day. Now, before we look at how they would have voted, I'm going to just put this chart up because this is really concerning also. To keep this consistent, I tried to, the green are parents who voted, the red are non-parents who voted. Did they vote on Election Day or did they early vote? Parents, 13% early voted. Non-parents, 16% early voted. In successful referendos that happened that we worked with across the metro area this November, the early vote amongst parents was double the non-parent voters. And actually, you had more non-parents early voting than parents. Now, to carry on to your question first, we asked the parent non-voters, the blue, how you would have voted. Thirty-eight percent said they would have supported both. Nine percent said only the levy. Six percent the bond. Twenty-eight percent would have opposed vote. And you could still, you could see still one in five parents who didn't vote still haven't made up their mind two months after the fact. Okay? Now, what did they tell us? And now, keep in mind, this is two months removed. So what they remember and how they actually did it, instead of where they're going to hedge, especially when you get the buyer's remorse. And you also have the factor of, you know, sometimes you don't want to tell somebody you voted against vote, especially if you're a parent. Focus on the groups that said they support both or they oppose both. So amongst parent voters, 58% said they opposed, that they supported both. Fifteen percent opposed vote. Amongst the red, the non-parent voters, it was 28% support vote and 43% opposed vote. Okay? With those factors in play with the non-parents at basically almost a two-to-one level of total support or total opposition to total support, it's hard to overcome that. Especially because in successful elections, with parent voters, it needs to be an 80 to 85% support amongst that group in order to overcome, especially when you only have a quarter of non-parents supporting both questions. Okay? Now, for those that supported both, we asked them why. These are the parents. What's the number one reason? Supporting schools is important. Then they trust you to effectively manage the money. And then the comparison, what, the comparison to the neighbors had less impact. Fifty-nine percent said it was major impact, 25% minor. And that you haven't had one approved since 2006. For parents, 51% major impact, 86% minor impact. So they all had a role here, but it is a concern always. What you have in this group, let's go to the non-parents that we'll talk about it. Amongst non-parents, the factors for support. The soft reason leads also, supporting schools is important. Then the trust level to manage the funds effectively. But then that, not approved since 2006, and the comparison of neighbors did not resonate very well with non-parents who still supported. The reason for support, this, the groups in both of these support schools because they're the schools. They would support almost anything. Those, that's kind of your core support. They're supporting for soft reasons. They're not talking about need. They're not talking about logical consequences. And what happens on Election Day, and you know, you've seen our surveys enough. You know, we do all those questions on atmospheres because we want to see if there's issues out there that we're going to take into the voting booth with them and vote no against a referendum to make sure. And if there are none of those atmospheres, then they walk into the voting booth and it becomes a simple cost-benefit analysis. How much does it cost and what's the benefit? And what we're going to see now, when we go to opposition, the cost is a concern and they didn't see the benefit. They didn't see the compelling need or the logical consequences coming through. So the major reason for opposition amongst parents, well, amongst both groups, but it's very pronounced amongst non-parents, is taxes. This is open-ended. Their number one response, 54% said flat out, the taxes are already too high. Amongst parents who opposed, it was 29%. If we go to double digits amongst parents, poor spending comes into play. Thirteen percent of parents who oppose said they didn't have enough information. And 10% of opposing parents said enrollment's going down. They didn't understand the need. With the high taxes at 54% amongst non-parents, it kind of warps everything else as an open-ended response. So then what we do is drill down with each group and ask them a series of questions, engage whether they were a major factor, minor factor. Amongst parents who oppose, what leads the list is the statement, "I did not see a compelling need for the school district's funding request." Ninety-five percent said it was a factor. Then you had 71% indicate that the district just passed one in 2015. Didn't have the information of the operating levy versus the bond. Then taxes come into play for parents. The increase to my property tax, I believe the passage of the referendum question would increase my property taxes too much. So the cost impacts 69%. And then flat out, my property tax is already too high. I'm not going to support it. I think it doesn't matter what the cost is, it's 66%. And then parents are higher. I believe the proposal included frivolous items the district did not need. And that was coming through with that group that I talked about and the priority, especially with younger parents, the millennial parents. So it really is amongst parents opposing, the need did not come through, and then taxes are a factor. On the flip side of non-parents, what goes to the top of the list is the taxes is a concern. Eighty percent major factor that their taxes are already too high. Seventy-six saying that the increase would be too much. But if you look at a total impact for parents who oppose, 91% saw no compelling need. That message did not get out to them. They're not a high priority at this time in life. They're non-parents, not a surprise. And then the frivolous items from the district just passed in 2015.
Can you explain, no negative consequences?
Yes. Let me just. The statement read, "There seem to be no significant negative consequences if the funding requests were not approved." So it kind of also goes into the compelling need, the negative consequences. So both of these groups in opposition, the parents and non-parents, that cost-benefit, there just wasn't enough there. And when you start with any referendum, and you're going to see it when they made their decision, you basically have 50% of people have made up their mind before the start. They're against you or for you regardless of if you're asking for a bond and operating levy, what have you. You have 50% that are persuadable. What you're seeing on both sides, the reasons for support, schools are important. I always support schools. Reasons for opposition, property taxes are too high. Where the flip comes in the persuadables comes down to logical consequences and need and understanding that cost-benefit, that something's going to happen if this fails. And they just didn't make that determination on Election Day. Now, helpful sources of information. The green are the parents. So we go to the Forest Lake Times. It's the dominant source for non-parent voters at 81%. I'm going to take off the bottom bar, the bottom one first. Amongst parents, it's district mailings, but then it's the Forest Lake Times, parents who voted. Amongst parents who didn't vote, it's district mailings and then the Forest Lake Times. But what leads the list across the board are friends and neighbors. It's the grapevine. Alive and lush and dominant. So one thing, and you can see, like the vote yes committee, about 20% impact. The taxpayers for accountability, basically the same. It gets into the grapevine because the grapevine is basically three-quarters and higher. Now, organized groups in support and opposition amongst parent voters, I'm going to do, because we asked, "Did you hear from a group in favor, in opposition, or from both types?" Okay? So we go to the FAR, didn't hear from any. 60% of parents didn't hear from anyone. 62% of parents who didn't vote didn't hear from anyone. And, or about parent not voters, and then 59% of parents who didn't vote. The total impact, if we look at parent voters, the green, 32% heard from vote yes. 15% heard from vote no. Amongst parents who didn't vote, 24% heard from vote yes. 19% heard from vote no. And amongst non-parent voters, 29% or, I'm sorry, 26% heard from vote yes, but 25% heard from vote no. The net impact of the vote yes versus the vote no was about a one-for-one for total impact in the community. And keep in mind, you only, you had 60% in all three groups say, "I didn't hear from anybody on this."
I'm going to send this to the guy who called me complaining because we were, that the vote yes committee was calling him too much.
Yeah. Well, there's a difference between recall, you know, did they hear from them? And did they realize they were hearing from them and did it have an impact?
Yeah, true.
This shows the impact of the contact, not necessarily whether it was major or not.
Yeah, no, I agree.
You know what I mean? But yeah. What could the district have done better to inform you? 60% of parent voters said nothing, it was great, had all the information they needed. 20% of parents wanted specific budget details, specifically what was in the package. Then 9% each wanted an argument for the need for the money and the uses for the money. Amongst parents who didn't vote, it's interesting, oftentimes when we do these surveys, they'll be much higher saying, "There's nothing." Because they didn't vote, they're unsure of what they really knew to start with. They actually had the most requests for information. 24% of them wanted budget details. 13% wanted need. And 12% wanted use. Amongst non-parents, budget details, 27%. And then 8% the need and the use. And then finally, when we talked about, I mentioned that a little bit earlier, 50% of people basically make up their mind before the fact this bears that out. Amongst parents, the green bar, go to my mind, was made up when the election was called. Looking at the timing of the decision, 46% of parents said their mind was already made up when the election was called. The red bar, non-parents who voted, 52%. Their mind was made up before the election was even called. Now, 22%, remember, 20% of parents who didn't vote still didn't know how they would vote, so their minds have made up two months later. 40% of them had made up their mind. So really what is in play then is about 50%. And it's very even. There's not a bump. You know, before Labor Day, it's about a 15% in each of the two voting categories. In September, a little bit higher amongst parents. Not surprising, kids are coming back to school. They're hearing the information now. October, equal bump, 10%. The weekend before, the last minute impact, 12% of each group made up their mind. But really, 50% had their minds made up when you had the election. 50% post-fact. And looking at the opposition, that cost-benefit is what hurt the 50% who were willing to have the discussion. I think that's the last chart.
Instead of the typical timeframe, two months, does that, was ours done in a typical timeframe?
It is typical because with, with the information coming from the Secretary of State, it normally takes them four to six weeks. I think you had it about the second or third week in December, which puts it so that we can't do it during Christmas. And so when we do these coming out of November, they typically take place right after New Year.
So is that a little bit of a delay or is that usually the best time to do it?
It's, I mean, well, the ideal time to do it would be the day after. I mean, with the most recent. But we want to be accurate in looking at it because what we do is take a look at their voting behavior. Because you'll have people tell us they voted and they didn't vote, you know? And, you know, my phoneers don't say, "Hey, you didn't vote." You know, because if you call them the next day, "Oh, yes, I voted." Everybody votes, everybody recycles in Minnesota. You don't want to tell a stranger you didn't do that. And so I take the list that I get from the Secretary of State and say, "Here are the ones who voted, here are the ones who didn't vote." And so they go right in and say, "Okay, you voted in the 2017 election. We're going to ask you questions this way." We're not going to let them have a halo effect on it. And that's why we have to wait for that list to come out from the Secretary of State.
We got a question, back to the first page. I'm having trouble understanding the parent voters and non-voters. So if you look at eighteen to twenty-four, and the green bar is a three, and the red bar is a fourteen, what is that really telling me that eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds?
Three percent of parents who voted were eighteen to twenty-four years old.
What's the fourteen?
Fourteen percent are parents who didn't vote. The green is the two-hundred-and-fifty, on this one, the green is the two-hundred-and-fifty sample of parents who voted. The red is the two-hundred-and-fifty sample of parents who didn't.
Oh, they're coming on a different sample.
They're coming on a different samples. So this is saying, basically five-to-one ratio, under-twenty-four-year-old parents didn't vote in comparison to those who did vote. And then combined with the thirty percent, twenty-five to thirty-four, that's where you get the forty-four percent of the millennial parents didn't vote in this election, and thirty-two percent of them did. Make sense?
Good.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question, trying to understand. So when you call them, you know already that they voted or they didn't vote, but you don't mention that to them, or you do?
No, we don't, we don't tell. We did, they just go right into the questionnaire.
Okay, so you now know they don't, didn't vote, and they come out with questions that are, I mean, answers that are clearly only given if they would have voted. That ever makes anything up? You know, I didn't vote, but you call them, tell me, or ask me a question about the school or something, and I say, "Oh, I really like this school," or, I mean, how do you figure out if they're telling the truth about whether or not they're answering according to whether they voted or not?
Well, because we, we find out, so I know, I know they voted or they didn't vote.
Right.
Okay? So we ask, we have, you know, a couple of questions, age, household with children, we tell them that thirty-two percent are registered voter, registered voters voted, "Did you yourself vote?" Now, if they tell us the wrong answer.
Okay, so you do ask the question?
Yes, and then screen in, but we don't let those that tell us the wrong answer go through then to the section.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, stop.
Because that's going to screw everything up.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, so after hearing about all this, you know that we need to do better communication? Or try to give pretty much consequences, if things, be more clear about what will happen if this does not pass, and be more clear? It seems like that seems to be the consensus.
It's, it's, it's the driving factor in any election. I mean, if people, and I think that that is part of the reason now you have started the discussion on budget cuts. Now you have a much higher number of parents saying, "Oh, yeah, I might have voted on the operating levy." Oh, you didn't. I mean, we, you know, I can't tell you you didn't, but that's coming into play when they hear about it, but you don't want them to have that after the fact. They need to know upfront. And there will be those that say, "You're threatening." It's not a threat. People have to understand, if something does, if, if the money doesn't come through, something is going to happen. Or else why would anybody give anybody a dollar if there's not a benefit in anything? Now, the one thing though, I would, you know, we always warn clients about is, you don't want to become too specific. There's two things as you're doing logical consequences. You have to keep it broad, in the sense that, you know, I've seen one district failed a referendum we worked with about twenty years ago. They came out and said, if this referendum, it was a bond referendum, if the bond referendum fails, we're going to have to close this school on this side of the district. The other side of the district said, "Great, doesn't impact us, you're going to merge those two schools together and vote it against it." Now you have to have a discussion in the community, so like the Nooka Edithin this time around, with their big bond referendum, you know, there was discussion on what the logical consequences would be. One of the real logical consequences was going to be attendance boundaries. But you, you're not going to get into it then and say, "Okay, well, Conrapp's might go over here, or they're going to go here." You just say, "This is one of the logical consequences coming out." The other caveat though, as you go forward, is there's one district in the metro area, probably a decade ago, came out with logical consequences, the referendum failed, and they didn't do them. Then you destroy trust and credibility. Then, then the opponents on the, on the question of whether it's a threat or not have a very valid argument. You know, you have to be, I mean, there has to be a logical consequence if the money doesn't happen.
But is saying class sizes will get bigger, is that big enough of a consequence, do you think?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I'm kind of hung up on this, sixty percent of parents said that we, there's nothing we can do to better inform them.
They're not saying, they're, they're saying they had all the information they needed.
Okay.
But they still didn't vote.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I, I mean, in looking at that, if you look at that intended vote, as Karen asked about, the parents who didn't vote though, it wasn't that eighty percent of parents who didn't vote were supportive. It was actually, take out the twenty percent that are still undecided, it's basically forty-thirty. It's about fifty-six, forty-four percent supporting both and opposing both amongst parents who didn't vote, amongst the millennials. So that argument, that tie, in order to make them understand, because these are the key stakeholders, especially in an operating levy. This is, if you have a kid in first grade, this is your kid's next eleven years. This is the shape of it, this is what it looks like, this is the impact. If you have preschool households, if your preschoolers in your household, this, you have even a longer stake in understanding that the operating levy is imperative, what the logical consequences are.
So back to the election day versus early vote. You said that, so was this unusual to you, that it's the same amount of non-parents as voting parents? It was like almost equal?
Yeah. It's, in districts that have, that have been successful, I mean, and the early voting push really is now just, it's been in the last two to three years, the real push. And a lot of the pushes come from us going to districts and sharing with them the same information you saw millennials. I mean, it really came out of this need to have a discussion, they're stakeholders, but it's not a priority. If something, Billy's got hockey, or Anna's got dance, or they both have hockey that night, and they're driving, is it hockey, or is it, I'm going to go vote? That group is more often than not going to hockey than they're going to vote. And so really, you know, the two thousand fifteen, the big push for early voting came through, and in targeting parents specifically, and house, and parents of preschoolers. I mean, there was one district in the south metro, because of the early voting, where it was in the district office, they also had the ECFE preschool program right there. They basically put the table right outside the door for the preschool ECFE program. So the parent almost was tripping over in order to go in, and they had a lot of early votes come in, and the targeting conferences, you know, there's all sorts of ways. But it's very much a concern, because you know that non-parents who early voted were all opponents. So this is, that one's telling you, you have, before election day happened, you had more votes against than you had for you. And that's the exact opposite of what you're hoping to see on election day.
Exactly, and I think we've really been pushing early voting, thinking it's very beneficial for busy parents, and so I'm really surprised to see that it really brought out, like you said, we were behind the eight ball with early voting.
And one of the factors for opposition with the non-parents was, did not trust the school district. Did they elaborate much on what they meant by that? Did they not trust, trust we were going to do what we said, or we spent money on it?
Everything, exactly. That's kind of getting into the core.
Core.
It's, it's the poor spending. So the question is, I did not trust the school district to spend the funds as they promised. The, the concern on, on spending that every district has. Keeping in mind now that, so it is, where is it?
Reasons for opposition?
Hey, did not trust the school district. So you, seventy-four percent of opponents that feel that way. Right, if you go, I'm sorry, if you go back to the, the open-ended question, why did they oppose? You have what we expect in every district on this, you've got eleven percent of non-parents say poor spending, period, as a factor. That's like a universal concept in every district. If you throw out there, why don't, you know, why are you going to oppose a referendum? Ten percent say, "I opposed because of poor past spending," or spending decisions. So that's not abnormal, it's the tax factor coming into play.
It seems like with the factors for opposition, there, there's nothing that really, I mean, there's some high ones, but there's nothing that really, really sticks out, and the others are diminished. And I would think that when you've got that, I mean, they do curve down, but it, it seems like there is just an anti-levy mood almost, because it's like they're saying everything was, they're checking everything.
Yeah, they were much, yeah, you're much more likely to go right down the list on, oh, you know, I hit the mouseboard.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you go right down the list, the impact changed, or the total impact didn't vary very much.
Right.
What did was the intensity. You're right, it was just giving another reason and another reason. And, and that's why, you know, to keep, to put it in perspective, for those who become up with logical consequences and they say, "You're threatening us," that's, that would just be another reason up there. They're still going to be against you because of X, Y, and Z, but here's another reason to be against. You know, I've heard all sorts of wonderful reasons. If the operating, I'm sorry, if the operating levy was seven years instead of ten, I would have supported it. Oh, you wouldn't. It's, it's a, it's a Minnesota nice way to, in order to justify, to say, "I don't want to pay more taxes," in essence.
Right.
You know, it's just what, what happens. And so this kind of does show that everything is a bit of a reason, just some reasons are bigger than others.
Right. Yeah, it almost feels like when I look at that, that there was, the opposition really, both the people that should have been voting yes and voted no, and the people that voted no, didn't have strong particular reasons why they weren't, but they didn't have strong particular reasons about yes either. And so that then they're just throwing everything at the wall, kind of, "Well, yeah, 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 you know what I mean?" As opposed to saying, "Well, I didn't like how they were planning on closing a school," or something like that.
Yeah, among factors for opposition in every district, even St. Louis Park could ask eighty-twenty. If we talked to the twenty percent that opposed, property taxes too high would lead that list. Okay? That, that's how it is. Now their property tax hostility is about the same here. What's going to be different is the need and the, well, the compelling need and the negative consequences. Understanding that and overcoming it. It's like Roseville, I think that referendum on the average house was forty bucks a month, which in Roseville, that's a lot of money. It passed seventy-five, twenty-five. Because the tax increase might be too much, but the compelling need and the discussion on the buildings haven't been updated since nineteen ninety-two. You can overcome people's, for instance, you can overcome some of the perception on property taxes and the concern on the increase in taxes if the need and the logical consequences are there.
So Peter, to that end, we had this conversation earlier, we, we hung our hat to a large degree on the message that we, we're in last place, we don't compare to other districts. Our levies are eleven years old. As it relates to compelling consequences, compelling the rationale we took, or that case, I should say, wasn't what moved the needle.
That's not going to, that won't push the needle. That will reinforce for supporters, and it did. You saw, you saw it reinforced. There are a few school districts on the west side of Minneapolis, and a little bit south, that the comparison to the neighbors matters a lot. Almost every other school district, what the neighbor's doing is what the neighbor's doing amongst that persuadable group. The timeframe of not having a successful referendum passed since blank on an operating levy doesn't seem to have the impact across the state. It does, timeframe matters on bond referendums. Because buildings, deferred maintenance, people see that. So, you know, we're going to say, Apollo's, I don't know, seventy-five years old, people get that. Roseville, ninety-two is the last one, the day passed, it's been almost a quarter century. That makes sense. But operating levies for, to, to use that to justify it, it reinforces support, it doesn't change minds or move the needle amongst the, the persuadables. We just haven't seen it except a few districts that want to keep up with the Joneses.
Well, I just wanted to add that I thought in the factors proposition, seventy-one percent that, you know, talked about just passed in two thousand fifteen. I mean, we kind of were thinking that, and that is a huge number.
Yeah.
That's the biggest. Well, and it does kind of tie in with taxes.
It does, it has to do with taxes too.
Well, even between bond and levy, they don't differentiate.
They don't differentiate.
Yeah. We used to ask, I, I've been doing this now, I've been doing this since ninety-four. And I remember when I first started, Bill, you know, okay, we always ask people, because I walked in, I didn't know the difference between an operating levy and a bond referendum, I was a college graduate, Bill taught me at Augsburg. And I'm like, "Why do we ask this question? What we need to understand are people's, what their knowledge level is." And by nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, it was literally twenty-two percent in any district knew the difference. Seventy-eight percent didn't know. So now we just, we took it off, it's a waste of question. We know what the answer is, people don't understand the difference between an operating levy and a bond. You know, you can do all sorts of clever things with bonds for building, levies for learning, all of those sorts of things. But they just see it, this was a funding request. You know? Yeah, it really, that, that difference is lost on them.
This is a crazy question, because there's no way you can know. But after doing this, if someone was thinking about coming back a year later, do you give any, any sense of, you know, this is, this is it forever, or is it like, you've said before, maybe some are trying to call them a little bit, that now that they learn a little bit more, they would have voted for it? But did you get any sense from talking to other people that we might come back and they may change their mind?
Oh, I, I think you see it on their recall of how they voted, especially amongst parents. And especially the tip towards, "Yeah, I might have supported only the operating levy." Because when you're talking about budget cuts and they're understanding there's consequences, the bond referendum doesn't have that bump. It, 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 it doesn't. And in, in looking at it, especially the concern on the, the sports and the arts and that sort of thing in it, you know, to, to come back this November and have a discussion, it would be, you know, looking at this, it makes sense to go for operating levy. And the discussion's all about need and logical consequences, and what's going to happen if it fails. And you then do have a track record of, these are the budget cuts, you know, a very effective argument that other districts have used going into this last round of referendum where they're going for levies, is over the past four years, the district has cut X million dollars out of the budget. Okay? That overcomes, because if you go out and say, "If we don't get this, we're going to cut." If you go back all the way to the Jesse years of, it's perfect storm in two thousand one, where he said, "Make them cut. Vote no, make them cut." Because they haven't cut. And then the districts cut, and then parents said, "Okay, there's a traffic record." It's kind of works with enrollment growth too. You want to see the steps have been taken and to continue to validate the continued need, instead of saying, "Okay, we've been going along fine now, but if we don't get it in the future, use the," you know, it's, it's sad. it's sad too, but it's a track record. This is what we've done to be financially responsible. And if it doesn't happen now, there's going to be further pain going down the road. You know, Jesse wanted to trim fat, get down to cutting muscle and bone at some point, and use that track record. That's a very effective argument for persuadable people because it kind of justifies that you're being responsible with taxpayer money. I mean, you do have to come in with a balanced budget.
I'd like to, having this reflection on friends and neighbors. I think that's probably very true with our community schools that are such a broad geographic district that we don't get the same sources. So they do tend to be only other neighbors, friends, I hear that. I didn't read the article, so I called so-and-so, or, yeah.
And it's interesting, well, if the blue and green are parents, and the non-parents, they're very disparate grapevines. Those two, those grapevine, parent grapevine and non-parent grapevine is not going to intertwine at all. You've got ECFE, you've got sporting events, you have senior events, restaurants, those sorts of things. But both of those are very predominant. You know, three-quarters of the community, it's at least a somewhat helpful, if not very helpful, source of information.
Don't door knock again. We don't door knock.
Well, I think the last, series of, I mean, the bond campaign, the last campaign, both involved the calling list, and that's an attempt to approach that. It's having all, each person get a certain number of friends in and call them, get them out to vote.
Hindsight, hindsight is really easy.
Twenty, twenty.
To get them to the polls.
All right, any other questions, comments? I just think that, I mean, one thing I always say to myself is that if people could see what I see in the cuts, they would be, they would vote for these things, right? And that's kind of what you're saying here, is that if people could see the cuts, they'd be much more motivated to vote for it. I mean, it's always been a fear when we've had levy campaigns, when people are oftentimes afraid to say, well, you know, people don't like being told this stuff, so let's just have it positive about kids or whatever. But, you know, I just think that, I hope people can see what we're seeing and that we can communicate that out to people.
Yeah, in any, when you're talking on a referendum like, any referendum, you've got to answer some key questions for the public. You have to make it short and simple. What are you asking for? What does it cost? What happens if it doesn't pass? Those are the three overarching questions that any resident has when they consider a referendum. And that third one, you really have to have that context.
Yeah.
It has to be personal, I believe that's another thing. What is it going to do, how is it going to affect me?
Right.
That's really their own person, you know, it's going to affect my type. The other side of that is getting them to understand as we have to, as we get older and sitting on these boards and listening more, is school finances and how that works. And it came up a clever idea tonight in communications that maybe having a session in the end, have someone, they're interested, because at Midland, we have trouble understanding, the legislators don't understand. So there might be people, I know it came out at Linwood, that they really wanted to understand more. And if they had an opportunity to do that, that might help something.
And we have heard some of these things, having more budget information, or, you know, breakdown of the scope and...
Not to leave them on stage, but generally, a lot of this.
Just, you know, time.
There's about five percent in any community that if the superintendent would go have coffee with them every Monday morning and go through line of item of the budget, they would love it. Every community's got those folks. The question is, there are some that want the detail, just not at that level.
Right.
Right. All right, well, it looks like we've got no new business, and so do we have emotional jerks.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
All vote, thank you.